Good evening, everyone. I'd like to invite you to follow along with us as we convene the April 25th, 2019 regular meeting of the Kern County Planning Commission. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ashley?
Here.
Ms. Brink? Mr. Judge?
Here.
Mr. McGiffney?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Mr. Van Wyk?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Simon?
Here.
Thank you very much. Second item on the agenda is Commissioner member announcement or reports.
None.
Seeing none, we'll move on to item C, which is approval of the minutes from the April 11th, 2019 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no changes, I would make a motion to approve as set forth in our package.
Allow a second on that?
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, will you please call for the vote?
All ayes.
All ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Melissa might want to say something else besides that. Okay, so item D is cases withdrawn or request for continuance. We have none of those. Likewise, we have no consent items. So we'll move right along to our public presentations. This portion of the meeting is for people desiring to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda over which our commission has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to two minutes. Please state your name and address for the record before making your presentation. Do we have any presentations tonight? Seeing none, we'll move into the public hearings portion of the agenda. We have one case this evening. Mr. Murphy, will you start us off there, please?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I have with me across the aisle, Mr. Joe Parra. He is the staff planner who worked directly on this case. And then I have Ms., well, you know Ms. Simon, of course. The item is conditional use permit number 30, map number 10125. The project itself, before your commission this evening, is a conditional use permit that would authorize an annual fall festival. The applicant for this project is Mr. Mike Ross, and he is represented today by Mr. Chris Mink with QK. The project site itself is located on the south side of Rosedale Highway on approximately 20-acre parcel owned by North of the River Parks and Recreation District. The parcel itself is located between Old Farm Road and West Jueta Avenue. The property is designated estate residential by the Metropolitan Bakersfield General Plan, and it has a zone classification of exclusive agricultural. As shown on the site plan, which I believe Mr. Parra will be putting up, as part of the festival festivities, the project applicant is proposing a haunted house, proposing a corn maze, and then also proposing a pumpkin patch. Your commission should further be advised that while the entire parcel is approximately 20 acres in size, all project operations will only be conducted on the northernmost nine acres approximately. This site design specifically excluding the back portion of the project site was designed to reduce any direct impacts to the proposed festival, the proposed festival may have on any of the surrounding residential developments. Additionally, any of the more intense uses that would generate noise, such as the haunted house and the pumpkin patch, have been located on the east side of the property away from any of the existing adjacent residential, residential uses. This festival itself has been in operation annually throughout the Metropolitan Bakersfield area since 2006. From 2006 to 2008, the festival was located at the Fruitvale and Norris Park. From 2009 to 2012, the festival was held at this same parcel that is before your commission this evening. From 2013 and 2014, the festival was held at the Kern County Museum. From the years 2015 through 2017, the festival was held on North of the River property located adjacent to Centennial High School along River Lakes Drive or Meanie. And in 2018, the festival was located at the Track House. This is the building located across from Rush Air Sports near the intersections of Gilmore Avenue and Buck Owens. As currently proposed, the project applicant is requesting the fall festival be held on weekends, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday during the month of October with additional days for October 30th and 31st. While setup would begin at 10:00 a.m., the facility would be open to the public from noon to 10:00 on Friday and Sundays and from noon to midnight on Saturdays. During the course of processing this request, staff notified surrounding property owners within a thousand feet of the project site, along with affected agencies and county departments. As a result of that notification, staff received four comment letters from public agencies, and additionally, staff received three comment letters from adjacent residences who are opposed to the project due to increases in crime, dust, noise, and traffic. And if Mr. Parra, if you could point out for the commission, the residences' areas that identify the most concern with this project site? There you go, to the west and then south. And as your commission can see, the project site itself is only located on the northern portion of the parcel. So in response to the concerns that have been raised, staff reviewed the local crime that were reported within a half mile of the property during the years 2010 through 2012, when the festival was operating at this location. As a result of that review, staff could not identify any crime reports that were directly related to the festival activities. Additionally, we could not identify any specific increases in crime directly related to this particular project in this location around the surrounding areas. To address the comments and concerns, however, staff has included for your commission Condition 4G, which would require the submittal of a security plan. Staff has included Condition 7G, which would require the project applicant to install a chain link fence along the southern boundary of the project site to ensure that customers cannot access the restricted area during any project operations. Condition 4F would require the applicant to mail a notice to all property owners who are abutting the project site that would outline the hours of operation and that would specifically provide a contact number in which residents could call for any after-hours noise-related disturbance that they would hear. In addition, staff is proposing Condition 5G. This is a condition that has not necessarily been before your commission before, but staff is specifically requiring that this project applicant set up a deposit so that during the course of events, staff will be able to periodically go and visit the site to make sure that they are closing when they are supposed to, to make sure that ticket sales have stopped when they are supposed to. And so this is an extra added condition to ensure that the project is being implemented as conditioned should your commission approve the project. Addition, Condition 6C will require all the parking area be surfaced with the appropriate materials such as decomposed granite to reduce any dust emissions from vehicles that would be driving onto the project site. In its totality, staff has reviewed the project and is recommending approval before your commission. The project site would not generate any traffic-related impacts to the surrounding residential properties as it will take direct access off of Rosedale Highway. Specifically, it's required to take direct access off an already existing paved drive approach. Additionally, the property is owned by North of the River Parks and Recreation District. The site is currently undeveloped, along with some potential row crops. However, establishing a consistent use of the site will help to ensure that this underutilized vacant property remains actively maintained throughout the calendar year. The site has been designed, site has been conditioned to help minimize impacts to the adjacent residential properties, again, by focusing more of the intensive uses on the east side of the lot. Additionally, the entire 10-acre back lot will be fenced off, which will prevent any unauthorized access. I would note for your commission's consideration that such a condition did not exist when the facility was previously located on the site. Previously, the entire property was utilized for the festival activities. It is the determination of staff that your commission can make the five necessary findings to approve the conditional use permit. While staff is recommending approval of the project and recommend approval to the project in previous years, this proposal is a scaled-down version as what has previously been located on this project site. The previous approvals at this location included both a fall and a winter festival. It included properly, directly adjacent to the existing residences, and it authorized events during the weekday and the weekend. As I had presented today, this particular project now will only propose events Friday, Saturdays, and Sundays. It only includes the fall festival for the month of October. I would note that subsequent to distribution of the staff report, the project applicant had contacted staff requesting some slight modifications to a few of the identified conditions. Additionally, I would note that the project applicant had provided your commission with a letter identifying those conditions as such. Three of the conditions, should your commission desire, staff believes they can, they are consistent and would be in conformance with protecting the adjacent residential uses. One condition, staff is not recommending any changes to, but it is on the list should your commission like to discuss it. The first condition is Condition 1A. And again, this condition specifically identified when the events could be located. The project applicant indicated that when October 30th and 31st fall on the weekends, during the weekday, their original application, they had requested to be open. After a review and thinking about it a little bit more, they are now requesting that it, should October 30th and 31st fall on a weekday, they would actually not be open those days, and is requesting just be open that weekend, which would extend into the first week of November. So staff has looked at a calendar. It is our recommendation to recommend your commission approve this conditional use permit for a temporary period of three years. So how those dates fall, in 2019, the 30th and 31st fall on a Wednesday/Thursday. So the condition as identified in this overhead would be that they would not be open on the 30th and the 31st in 2019. However, they could be open on November 1st and 2nd in lieu of those days. For the years 2020, the 30th falls on a Friday and the 31st is on a Saturday, so it makes no sense to change any of those dates. And then in the year 2021, October 30th is on a Saturday, and then the 31st falls on a Sunday. So it does not believe that any changes should be made to that condition. So should your commission wish to allow them to stay open for that first weekend in November, staff has identified Condition 1A. Events shall only be held on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays during the month of October. Additionally, in the year 2019, the festival may be held on November 1st and November 2nd in lieu of October 30th and 31st. And then we would strike out that language in between should your commission desire to make that accommodation. The next condition that the applicant indicated they would like your commission to consider has to do with the hours of setup. Condition 1D currently reads that onsite installation of the festival shall start August 15th through to the first Thursday in October from the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The applicant is requesting that those hours be extended till 8:00 p.m. In looking at this particular condition, staff does believe that that might be a little bit inappropriate. They are adjacent to that residential property, hearing the construction noise of putting together the haunted house. We believe that there is ample time for the project applicant to adequately construct the site during those times. So staff would not be recommending your commission make those changes to that condition. But again, you see the applicant is potentially requesting that at this time. The additional condition is Condition 1F. This specifically has to do when the operation must cease and when everybody has to be off the site. As the condition is currently written, ticket sales must close one hour before everybody has to be off the site. In staff's mind, that allowed half hour to get any people that were visiting, guests, customers, to get off the site, and then an additional half hour for staff to close up and lock up and make the site secure, and then vacate the site. The applicant is requesting a little bit additional time. The applicant is requesting that if the closure time is 10, for example, then ticket sales would have to stop at 9:00. All the customers would have to be off the site by 10:00, and then the staff that is working and volunteers would have an additional hour to close up, secure the facility, and then they would have to be off by 11:00. So staff has identified, should your commission wish to make those changes to allow the applicant staff to stay an hour to close up the facility, we've identified what those changes would be. Specifically, if those were things that your commission was interested in, Condition 1F would be changed to read, "Festival activities that are open to the public shall be allowed from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Fridays and Sundays." We would delete the reference to October 30th and 31st. And then it would read on Saturdays, "Festival activities that are open to the public are allowed from 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. There shall be no ticket sales occurring within one hour prior to closing." That would be 9:00 p.m. on Fridays and Sundays, or 11:00 p.m. on Saturdays. All guests must be off the site by these mandatory closing times, 10:00 p.m. Fridays and Sundays, or 12:00 a.m. on Saturdays. All volunteers and festival personnel must be off-site no later than one hour after the final closing times, either 11:00 p.m. Fridays and Sundays, or 1:00 a.m. Saturdays. Failure to abide by these times outlined above may result in the Director of Planning and Natural Resources Department placing additional limits on the hours of operation, including a restricted, restriction of hours. So again, the purpose behind these changes would be to allow the working staff an additional hour after every, all the guests are off to close the facility. And then the final condition that the applicant identified that they had requested changes to is Condition 6D. As the condition currently reads, in the parking area, there would have to be a whole lot of striping to identify each of the parking stalls. Based on the decomposed granite, people driving on and on the property during these events, the applicant was concerned that that may require restriping every single day, and it was their intent to have parking attendants directing people where to park anyway. So staff would recommend, at the end of Condition 6D, the use of parking attendants as part of their traffic control plan will allow the applicant to forego the requirement of painting stripes to the designated parking spaces. Again, it was staff's opinion that if you have designated parking attendants, then you don't need to specifically have every single parking stall identified. So again, staff is recommending approval of this project. As currently written, staff is recommending that your commission approve the temporary conditional use permit for a period of three years, with all operations to cease November 2021, in accordance with the recommended conditions and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached resolution. Based on public comments, should your commission wish to modify any of the conditions based on these potential recommendations I have presented for you, I would just need to know what those conditions are so I can ensure that the recommendation is appropriate based on your commission's ultimate decision. That completes my presentation, but I would have to answer any questions should your commission have any.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any questions from the commission?
I see. I see.
Yeah. I see Mr. Mink in the audience. Would you like to speak on behalf of your client?
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening. For the record, my name is Chris Mink, and I am with QK Consulting, representing the applicant, Mr. Mike Ross. I wanted to thank staff for their presentation of the project. I think that Mr. Murphy laid out the intent here and, you know, the fact that it is only on the north portion of the site. We are generally in concurrence with staff's recommendations on the conditions. We did have a few conditions that we wanted to tweak and make minor tweaks to, and I believe you did receive our letter that we passed out today. In going through those, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Murphy suggested changes to Condition 1A. Our language was slightly different, but I think that his language is actually superior and would be making better fit there, so I think we would concur with that language. That goes for Condition 1F as well. The other one that we were asking for is Condition 1D and Condition 1E, as these relate to the time in which construction activity can occur while leading up to the event. So the way it reads is onsite installation of the festival shall start August 15th through the first Thursday in October from the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We understand that there could be noise generated during the construction activities. However, my client and his associates are full-time employees. They own their own businesses. They work normal business hours like most of us do, and so this being more of a hobby for them, this, their opportunity to be out on the site from 9:00 a.m. is really hard. They prefer to be able to go out there in the evenings and work on it, and that's why we asked for the six-week period leading up to the event. What we were suggesting was that we would tweak the measure to say 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. However, we want to add a sentence that said, "No heavy equipment, including compressors, semi-trucks, or stadium lighting shall be operated after 5:00 p.m." So in this case, you would have, Mr. Ross would go out there and he would start to put the trailers out during the day, but then as they do the lighting and stuff inside the trailers, the electrical work, they would do that at night likely, and that would, and that would be done without any type of heavy equipment being operated. So that was, that was kind of what we thought we could do there for Condition 1D and for 1E, because the 1E is related to the removal of the facility after the operation. Other than that, I did want to reiterate what Mr. Murphy said regarding the history of the event. Mr. Ross and his associates have been putting on a festival like this in town for over 12 years. We believe staff has made the recommended conditions that are appropriate to reduce noise and dust and light. These events are, you know, great events. They're events that our kids go to. They're events that a lot of the community members go to. Without this event, there is no other event for kids to go to and have a safe environment where they can participate in these activities. And so we appreciate staff and working with staff on this, and we'd appreciate if you would approve the project as recommended with the, with the conditions that we have asked for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mink. Are there other members of the public who would like to speak on this project? Please state your name for the record, please, if you might.
Michael Salz, S-A-L-T-Z. Distinguished members of the Planning Commission and community members, as I indicated, my name is Michael Salz, and I reside at 2124 Autumn Rose Court in Bakersfield, near Rosedale Park. I am speaking against the proposal for a fall festival at Rosedale Park. It is disheartening that we have to discuss this topic again after the saga of the residents of Rosedale endured when night terror productions located their festival at Rosedale Park. We have been through these discussions before in 2010 and 2012. Finally, after complaints about noise, dust pollution, and code violations, the Board of Supervisors moved the fall festival to a more appropriate location at Pioneer Village. The site that is being considered for the fall festival is a dirt lot. The applicants are mirroring their festival after Talladega frights with a haunted house, corn maze, and pumpkin patch. The use of only the north half of the Rosedale Park does not prevent sound and dust pollution from traveling to homes around the area. The proposed site aligns with the apartments and homes on Handle Avenue and the homes on West Jueta Avenue. Blatantly left out of the notice were the proposed dates of operation and operating hours, which we heard about this evening. On September 26, the Bakersfield, strike that, on September 26, 2012, the Bakersfield Californian had an article about night terror productions and the request for extended haunted house hours to stay solvent. Quote, "Opponents complained that the late hours would keep the neighborhood children from sleeping and that it wasn't the kind of operation they want in their backyards." End of quote. Supervisors voted to give Haunted House a break in their final season at the Rosedale Highway location only because Supervisor Ray Watson said, quote, "My intention was not to bankrupt Mr. Wilbur," end of quote. Although Supervisor Watson was confident that the business could control the sound and minimize disturbance to the surrounding neighborhood, the noise pollution and dust created by traffic, people, and the attraction spilled over into our neighborhood, making the month of October a terrible time to sleep or enjoy the evenings outside. Although Kern County does not specifically list quiet hours, it does limit sounds that can be heard further than 150 feet away from the source from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. every day. Regardless, the sound of screaming visitors, chainsaws, and vehicles could be heard up until midnight of each night. In addition, Rosedale Highway is already congested with traffic, and it cannot handle thousands of additional motor vehicles. For the Planning Commission to even consider having a fall festival at Rosedale Park again is egregious and irresponsible. If this distinguished committee is that amped to have the fall festival, please move it to a location like Pioneer Village or a more suitable location, or in your backyards where you live. However, if you're under the unfortunate circumstance that your committee is set on having the fall festival at Rosedale Park, please limit the hours of operation till 9:00 p.m. daily. I am sure that you've heard of the term NIMBY, which means a person who objects to the sitting of something perceived as unpleasant or potentially dangerous in their own backyard. This project is a perfect example of NIMBY. The fall festival is not suited for the site due to the nuisance noise, annoying dust which cause valley fever to residents in the neighborhood. The fall festival is not suited for the site due to the nuisance noise, annoying dust, which caused valley fever to residents in the neighborhood, and excessive traffic. When my wife and I purchased our property in nineteen ninety-seven, we contacted the North of the River Recreation and Parks District, or NOR, and were happy to find out that the land behind our property was slated to become Rosedale Park. Even today, NOR's website lists Rosedale Park as the future home for a community park. NOR should build a park on Rosedale, um, Park Land as promised, instead of using the land for short-term endeavors. And let me make a few comments relative to the applicant. First of all, um, there are other suitable, um, uh, Halloween places for individual, for children to go. There's trunk or treat that are all throughout the churches in this community. In addition, um, having, um, the event be after trick-or-treat does not make any sense. Um, November first and November second, um, is not where we should be having, um, individuals go, um, for trick-or-treating or to, um, have this, uh, event. In addition, um, it needs to be scaled down. Having this open until either twelve midnight on Saturday or, as they suggest, one PM so that, uh, AM so that way their, their staff can be working on, on, um, the location is absolutely ridiculous. There, there are residents that live there. My house is valued, if you look on, uh, is valued at over seven hundred thousand dollars. I am not paying taxes on this, on my home so that way that I could be living next to, um, um, the fall festival. And if you think it, that this is something that should be in this community, then find a suitable location. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salz. Any other comments?
Hi. Good eve, good evening. Uh, Marshall Lewis, MD, I'm an orthopedic surgeon. Uh, I've been chief of orthopedics at several little major hospitals years ago in town here. I, I realize Mr. Murphy probably did a nice hard job, but he's staff and he should be protecting the people. When I operate on people, I think about the people first. You gotta think about the people that live in the area. I was here in two thousand and ten, it was a mess. And, and these people promised things they didn't deliver. First of all, I don't understand your idea with construction. I can't build a house after five o'clock. I can't build a house on Saturday and Sunday. Why should you be able to do work on something like this after five o'clock at night? I don't care it's someone's hobby. I got plenty of hobbies, I don't infringe on other people's rights with my hobbies. And I'm astounded that you would even think that was appropriate. Number two, Saturday twelve at night, twelve in the afternoon till twelve at night. We have kids, we have children in the neighborhood, people are trying to go to sleep, people are trying to enjoy their houses. I don't understand, you got cars coming from all different directions. Why wouldn't you put this somewhere near a highway? Rosedale Highway is not a highway. It's two lanes each way, it's congested most of the time. It's got two schools right there on the corner. A, a, a elementary school and a middle school. Kids running all over the place, and you want to put it back in that area? That was the reason they denied it before. I mean, you got schools, you got children, maybe, maybe the, the company would like to put a million-dollar bond up. Do you understand for anyone that gets robbed while that was going on, anyone that gets hurt while that was going on, or anyone that develops valley fever because of the coxie spores laying in the soil? We all know it's there, we live in a valley. Million-dollar bond so they can just file against the bond, that's all. You, 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 you've presented something where you give everything to the company and nothing to the people living in homes that they're paying a fortune in taxes. It's a high-tax state. We pay a lot of money in taxes so we can have peace at night. Not something like this going on where they're creating nothing but confusion. And Rosedale Highway isn't over, oh, is, is, has excessive cars on it, you know that, I know that, everyone else knows it. And the road they put in, that road goes right down the middle. If you're going west on Rosedale Highway, what are you doing, block traffic to get, to get across the road? I mean, are you kidding, and the noise? Okay. Let me just keep going, I just made a few notes, all right? North of the river and parks, this was supposed to be a park. You guys somehow never pushed them to build a park. This was supposed to be a park, period. People bought houses, and they should probably have a major lawsuit because they bought houses based on the fact they promised to put a park there. Their word is obviously not their bond, that's what courts are for. But they, they, you ask anyone that bought a house there, there was supposed to be a park, period. Not an entertainment center to the middle of the night. Just a couple of more quick notes I made, okay? Yeah, the other thing is, I don't understand something. Can we do a new procedure in orthopedics? We go very slow. Why the heck would you give a three-year, a three-year deal on something like this? What if it doesn't work? They got two more years? The supervisors want to, uh, decide on something that's new that hasn't worked before, by the way. These people were thrown out there and they were thrown out in second and third places. So now you're gonna stick them with a three-year deal? Are you kidding? You, you want to put some skin in the game? Put a million, a two-million-dollar bond down, anyone gets sick, anyone has a robbery, anyone has any problems from this, or the kids get sick, or the kids can't go to school because they're sick, because of the noise? Take it out of the two-million-dollar bond. And three years is ridiculous. If you're trying something out, you try it for a year. Why the heck would you put it near a place where there's all private houses? Put it out there where, where they can get off ninety-nine and get. A major highway. You're gonna have people coming from all over the place into a small, little congested community that's private houses. Makes no sense whatsoever. I thank you for your understanding.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Are there other comments?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Phil Hall. My house actually abuts this property. I've owned it for just about ten years, months shy. So I'm very familiar with everything that's going on, and I can tell you that I am in complete support of this project. I, I, I cannot be in more support of this project. That Rosedale Park has been there for, well, now I'm here in twenty years. When I moved in, it was supposed to be built a year and a half. It's not gonna happen. North of the River doesn't have the money right now, they might have it ten years, who knows when, but they don't have it now. And if this project is there, then I know something is being done on that property that isn't some sort of development that I don't want in my neighborhood. I mean, frankly, that is, that property could be multifamily housing, three-story multifamily housing looking into my backyard. It could have trash dumpsters right next to my pool house. So th- this is, this is frankly a very good project for that site. Some of the complaints I've heard, I just frankly disagree with them. My bedroom window is the closest window to that property at my site. I never had problems with noise. Not once. When this came about a while back, you know, I was here the night that, that this came before you in two thousand and twelve. And I came to speak against it then until I read the staff report. Once I read the staff report, I went, wait a minute, this is a good idea. It's a conditional use permit. If he doesn't follow his conditions, it's gone and he's gone. And during the time that he's there, I don't have to worry about development that I don't want on that property. So this is a perfect site for this. Until Rosedale, uh, till North of the River can build Rosedale Park, we need something there. As for dust, you can't really tell it in that picture because he's got the yellow lines through it, but if you look in the southwest corner of that picture on Google, you will see all sorts of traffic marks in there, from four-by-fours. Uh, there used to be one guy, I haven't seen him in a while, it's been about a year, one guy would ride his dirt bike in there all the time. My house is right there. You know, I washed my truck two weeks ago. One day it sits in the back, it's covered in dust because there's nothing going on in that field. So this will be actually, as far as I'm concerned, a godsend. I'd be, I'd love this there. I would love the winter festival that he was proposing to be there. So if you have any questions, be free to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Any other questions, comments?
Good morning, council, my name is Kevin Hill. Um, I am the lead designer and operator of a Scare Valley that's proposed to be at this location. You know, haunted houses are more than a hobby to me, it's, uh, even more than a love, it's, it's my passion. Uh, ever since I was a child, I looked forward to the annual festivals the fall would bring, Halloween costume, pumpkin patches, large amounts of candy would start to plague my dreams. October would start the ritual of yard decorations, school fairs, trick-or-treating, and even trips to what was screaming the dark by campus life. Around the early stages of high school, my parents broke the news to me that I was getting too old to trick-or-treat, and I wasn't gonna let that stop me. By the inspiration of others, I started theming and decorating my parents' house. Using dial-up internet, I found a community of, of haunters from across the world that shared the elaborate homebrew ideas that were truly unique to decorating. This continued over five years, where it grew to the talk of the neighborhood and even landed me a live shoot with news coverage for Kevin Sarette at KGET. Shortly after this, I was recruited to work for Talladega Frights, which ironically was the, was the, my first year was the same year that they were first moving out to this exact location on Rosedale Highway. This is my first time, um, this is my first time working with a professional haunted crew, and it pulled back the curtain on a whole new, different side of the industry. Fire codes, CUPs, ADA compliance, and egress were all new terms to me, but I was absorbing everything I could. I learned it all from Ta, I, I learned a lot from Talladega, from all its success, but also from its faults. One year, which was the year with Zombie X, which was a paintball attraction ride. Talladega was the second haunt in the nation to build such an attraction, but unfortunately, it was at the right time, but not at the right place. I remember, um, us almost losing next year's permits due to the complaints from the surrounding areas. Since then, I've added a checkbox in my own design process to rethink the big picture and take into consideration all variables and outcomes. My job as an entertainer is to leave a positive memorable, memorable impact on people's lives, not a negative or physical one. Not only would it be a dream for me to be back out here at this location, but also, um, all the volunteers, supporters, and actors that use this as an outlet. You know, some have extracurricular sports, some have band or music. Um, I have a, I have a wonderful staff of, of volunteers that, you know, come out and they look, they look forward to this. When Talladega's la, when Talladega announced this last year, it was heartbreaking for all of us. Uh, thanks to everyone's really hard work, we were able to keep this going and make it a yearly thing here in Bakersfield. Um, I firmly believe that what we have planned, um, here, to be back at Rosedale Highway in no way brings back memories of the old haunted attraction that was before us. Um, I really want to be the bump in the night for our, um, patrons, not our neighbors. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Any more questions, comments?
Hello, my name is Jerry Hill, and I'm a homeowner, and I have a house, uh, near this site here in Rosedale. I'm currently retired, and last year, the first year that we did Scare Valley, I volunteered and worked personally, so when I'm talking with you, I'm, I'm telling you through personal experience that I've worked with this Scare Valley operation and also have been to this site when it was Talladega Frights. I brought my children and grandchildren, we had a good time at the pumpkin patch, we took pictures. It was a nice family event, uh, that everybody had a good time with. The haunted house portion of it is more geared towards the teenagers or older, obviously. Uh, but they also had a good time and had a safe place to go. And we need more places like this, not less places like this, because everybody complains there's not anything to do in Bakersfield, and that's why I'm still on my, uh, video games and still in my phone and cellphone and sitting at home. And, uh, I just feel that you, we need to support more, uh, activities like this and not less. What I'm talking about personally involved means I helped with the construction process, helped during when it was open, and also helped, uh, tear it down or remove it. And I can tell you personally that, that everything was done professionally. This is professionally done, professionally planned, professionally managed, and professionally supervised. There was, uh, security guards on staff, nobody was allowed to, to just do what they want, and, uh, the whole goal was that we would have a good, safer environment, people could come and enjoy it. And if that's not their thing, then fine, that they can choose to do something else, but it, I just think that this should be another, um, another choice, another avenue. Also with the, uh, volunteers that we had, uh, mostly high school, uh, kids, that it was a good, uh, experience for them, you know? Maybe later on in their life, they could, um, uh, be an actor or go pursue that route, or at least learn responsibility and be able to come and, and do and take pride in what they're doing. And, um, I just felt that the whole thing was positive and not negative. Again, this year, uh, I mentioned earlier I'm retired, I'm gonna help again this year, helping the construction of it, uh, helping running it. Uh, and I'm a volunteer, I get paid nothing. And I just believe that there, this should continue to operate. The exact site that you're talking about, uh, was a Talladega Fright, so it's already had this experience on it, and I, I didn't see any negatives, I seen all as a positive experience of something, another thing to do here in Bakersfield. Um, I listened to your staff, and they talked about the project and the potent, the potential for there being problems, and it sounded like all those, uh, poten, uh, potential problems were addressed. They were all mitigated, and I'll say, okay, well, we see a potential for this, but we've done that, and that we see, could, so it sounds to me that, that they've already done a very good job and, and trying to figure out if this is gonna be a negative for the area, and then what that is, and then what we can do to fix that. And this is a limited amount of days, we're talking about just a small window of time in October that this would be opening and running, it isn't gonna be a year-round thing. Also, the homeowners here that have, uh, come out and protest, um, I respect that, you know, they have their opinion and that's fine. And I hope one day that they do get to park their promise. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Are there further, uh, comments on this project? Seeing none, I will go to the commission for their comments.
Yeah, Commissioner Chair, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, there was a few things that I'd just like to provide, um, for your commission's consideration, just regarding some of the comments that were, were discussed. The first thing I'd just like to note, um, is, uh, Mr. Salz had indicated that this project moved on its site because of the Board of Supervisors. That is not a correct statement. There's a whole history of the project that has been identified, um, on page two of your staff report. But this is a location and the property is owned by North of the River, so the applicant has entered into an agreement with North of the River, and previously, a conditional use permit for a temporary period of years was identified and approved for this particular site by the Board of Supervisors. That expired, and at the discretion and decision of the applicant, they moved to a different location. At no time did the Board of Supervisors say that this is not an appropriate site for this location or direct the project applicant to, uh, move locations. It is correct that originally, in nineteen ninety-eight, a conditional use permit was processed and approved for this site for a park. Clearly, that CUP has not been activated, therefore is, is null and void. Should North of the River want to put a park there anytime in the future, they would be required to process a conditional use permit, uh, just like they did, uh, previously. A, uh, fall festival was approved at this particular site, um, in two thousand and ten. After approval of that particular site, um, the project was, um, appealed, and the Board of Supervisors recommended approval of, of the, the appeal was denied, and the board authorized the facility to, uh, continue, um, at the location. Uh, additionally, the board authorized a fall and winter festival at this location. Uh, what was denied by the board was after the site had approval for a fall and winter festival, the project applicant came and requested that additional hours be, um, the conditions be modified to allow additional hours in excess of what was already approved. That was denied by the board, but the underlying use of the facility, uh, was still authorized. The only thing I'd also like to note is that staff had not recommended any construction activities occur after five PM, as again, that was a condition that staff recommended, uh, that your commission not necessarily change, just based on, on some of the concerns with, uh, construction-related, um, activities. And then in response to the three-year investment, or the three, the temporary period of time, um, to allow, uh, this particular project, similar to other conditional use permits, um, you know, a temporary period allows for some sort of investment. It does cost money, um, agreements have to be signed, and so staff believes that a three-year temporary, uh, period of time would be sufficient enough for the appropriate funding to help make this, uh, facility viable. You know, there's, are some concerns for that if it's only for one year, um, there's a lot of investment that is necessary, and that might not make the project, uh, feasible. Because we have had this project at this location and believe it does work, um, staff believes that the three-year time is appropriate, especially given the fact that it is, uh, greatly scaled down from the activities that occurred, um, at this location back in two thousand and ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. So again, I just wanted to provide your commission with some of that background, um, so that you had that as, as part of your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I will now go to the commission for their comments or questions.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I'm familiar with the project, I've followed it for years. I've reviewed everything in our package. And scaled-down project, uh, does make sense. Staff did a wonderful job of putting it together and putting the conditions in to protect the residences that are there, including fencing and dust control and the et cetera that we've been looking at here, so I'm totally in support of this project. And I would listen to other commissioners' comments, uh, and then I- And I would listen to other Commissioners' comments, uh, and then I would be prepared to make a motion unless another Commissioner would like to make it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would really like to thank you to the staff for preparing, uh, detailed staff report. Um, I would request if the applicant could come back up, I have a couple of questions. Do I get any clarification on, please?
Um, a, a question was brought to our attention that, uh, this was scaled down from original size of the event in prior history. Do you know how much the, of scaling down the size has been to this new project?
Uh, yes, um, Commissioner Josh through the chair. Uh, the, the original project was the whole of, of the site, so it was the entirety of the site. And there was a hayride and other events that occurred, um, on the southern part of the site closer to the residence.
And looking at it from the applicant's, um, opportunity to put a haunted house and a facility for people to come visit during this holiday, uh, Halloween season, um, is it, can you clarify if they've cut that down in half and taken away some of their attractions? What are they doing, if anything at all, to recoup some of that investment they made into those to stay profitable, as I was mentioning earlier, that might be an issue for them? Have they made any thoughts to that at all?
Um, I would like to have the, um, to have Mr. Ross come up and answer that question, if that's okay?
I, I've done these events in Las Vegas, Nevada. I currently do Bakersfield Christmas Town here at the Kern County Museum. I also do one at the Water Park in Las Vegas, Nevada. Um, our haunted stuff is all paid for. The only thing we gotta spend money on is the, uh, the parking lot, the DG and stuff. So, uh, previous ownership, uh, Mr. Wilbur, he was using it as a, um, a means of a living. I'm a local accountant here in town. This is just, uh, the guys came to me when Talladega Frights ended and Mr. Wilbur moved back to, uh, Utah and said, hey, you know how to run these events. And, uh, my, uh, whole wanting to come back here is I didn't see a Northwest pumpkin patch. And I know the haunted house would generate the revenue to support, you know, the bounce houses and rock walls and other family activities. I have six children from seven to 25, so it's kind of something for my whole family to do, not just a limited demographic. So Talladega had more of a, excuse me, a teenage feel to it where I'm looking for the family as a whole. So this is my reasoning for this. But as far as the financing goes, we're, we're very viable. A lot of our stuff is already paid for.
And thank you for that clarification. What, another question I have for you is, can you clarify? I know the hours of operation for setup and teardown was, um, a condition you requested to be modified. Can you please clarify for us what, what those three additional hours and what will be happening in those hours and why you're requesting that?
So it'd just be me and Kevin with headlamps, no running of equipment or anything. Just, you know, wiring, things that don't require any noise. Just give us a little extra time when we get off work just to do some of the wiring and setup stuff. So just, no matter how much time you have, it's not enough time. So whatever time we get, we're very gracious and generous for it. Just a little extra time lets us put on a little bit better show, you know? So it'd just be, you know, setting props and, you know, stuff that we all do by hand, not, not with any operation of, of equipment and stuff. So that's why we suggested to staff about maybe just shutting all equipment down at 5:00 o'clock and just letting us by hand do, uh, a continued, uh, setup time.
Thank you. I, I just wanna make a comment on some of the things that were mentioned earlier about dust being an, an issue. And, uh, one thing I'd clarify, coming from a construction background, uh, this property is sitting, um, basically vacant. And, uh, anything, when you don't have any type of development happening on property, uh, unless you are mitigating by putting water on it two, three times a week, uh, that dust will fly in the air. And that's, that's just the standard of something we live here in Kern County deal with on a regular basis. Um, in actuality, to come in here and put down a paved area, which will actually mitigate some of that dust to, dust to fly in the air and also, uh, put in building things like that, that minimizes the actual amount of, um, dirt or any of the exposed to people as being an empty field. And currently not being maintained, actually, there is, there's more of a chance of, of this field creating a, a dust and pollution to the air than if actually it was being used for some sort of an event. So I wanted to make that point, um, and, uh, I know that was addressed earlier, but some question was on the, the people in the audience.
Thank you, Commissioner Josh. Any further questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, do you have comments?
Sure, I was gonna say, I, I, our community needs more, more things like this. Um, I also commend staff, uh, on their efforts to make this work. I think, uh, a- as Commissioner Josh said, I, I'm, uh, I'm a biologist by trade. I'm fully aware of what lives in the soil. I'm, I'm fully aware of how, um, you know, what sort of dust pilot is or necessary to keep that there. DG is a great one, uh, to keep the dust down. So I, I think that's gonna be a good thing for this property. Is it, just, just another question, Mr. Ross. Is that DG gonna stay there? You gonna, you plan to pull that up when you leave? Or are you gonna leave that for the, for the duration of the season?
I'll leave it down. It's, it's kind of what I did on the, uh, Coffee and River Lakes property. I left it down for NOR to help their future development. I, I grew up in NOR sports, so I volunteer for them, coach and everything else. So I'm all about NOR and helping them get their parks for our community. So, um, I'll, I'll, it's an asset for them, so I'll leave it down.
Fencing as well?
Uh, fencing will, will come down. It's a temporary company, so just the DG, which would actually help the environment.
Gotcha. So I have no further comments.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, before we make a comment, I think we should discuss, um, there were some comments regarding the conditions that were additional, um, that D-Vida from my staff was recommending.
I was actually gonna put that into the motion as read into the record by staff.
Um, I would like to suggest, um, uh, because i- if my understanding and Craig Murphy, Craig, Mr. Murphy, please correct me if I'm incorrect here, but, uh, the staff is, is not recommending to give the additional three hours on the setup and the teardown. Am I understanding that correctly?
Uh, Commissioner Judge through the chair. When we had heard over the phone and based on that was a concern, uh, that is correct. We do not believe, um, that it should be appropriate to have construction going on, um, during those times. Um, again, it's up to you as your Commission. Um, you know, you heard the applicant indicate that they would not be doing any construction, but rather it would just be them onsite, inside existing buildings, doing wiring, which would not have any noise. Um, so again, uh, our understanding originally was, and the intent behind our recommendation to say, uh, no, was that we did not believe hammering, uh, use of equipment, uh, saws, blades, anything that goes on with the construction would be appropriate after 5:00 PM. Um, but again, you have those two conditions as, um, provided by, um, the applicants should you wish to, uh, to include that as well. But the intent was to make sure that there was no construction activities that were happening on the site after 5:00 PM.
Thank, thank you for clarification, and I agree with you. I think that, uh, any type of loud, heavy equipment is not required after 5:00 PM. That'd be disruption to the community there. Um, but I, I do, um, would like to make, before we make a motion, to allow the fact to, uh, allow the applicant to have additional hours as long as this minimized to no heavy equipment, no hammering. Um, but if they're working with inside their trailer, it, you know, it, to limit them to do that, uh, especially after hours since they are working on this as not a primary, primary job, I think we should allow that to be given to them for the, um, the build and the teardown.
Thank you, Commissioner Josh. Mr. Spurk.
Okay, with that, I would make a motion to approve item number one. CUP number 30 is read into the record by staff as well as the comments of Commissioner Judge. And you can clarify, Mr. Murphy.
Again, uh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, just so for the record, because I had not read. Um, I had read into the record, um, potential changes to condition 1A, uh, changes to condition 1F, and changes to condition 6D. Um, your motion based on that comment would also include, uh, changes to condition 1D, which would then read from now on, as site is, uh, onsite installation of festival shall start August 15th through to the first Thursday in October from the hours of 9:00 AM to 8:00 o'clock PM. No heavy equipment, including compressors, semi-trucks, or stadium lighting shall be operated after 5:00 PM. Uh, additionally, your Commission is, sounds as the recommendation includes, uh, modifications to condition 1E to read as follows. On-site removal of all festival items from the site shall be completed no later than November 15th from the hours of 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. No heavy equipment, including compressors, semi-trucks, or stadium lighting shall be operated after 5:00 PM.
That's it? That's my motion.
So it, it's the lawyer in me, I think, that, um, is struggling with that. I completely agree conceptually. It's the just no heavy equipment and then the modification of compressors. And I think, based on your intent, I'm completely comfortable. Um, I would just, I think, prefer a bit more precise language that makes very clear that it's, it's beyond just like not allowing heavy equipment, like anything that's gonna make noise. I mean...
Madam, uh, Commissioner Poole through the chair. If it read, no heavy equipment or noise generating equipment.
Great.
Including, and I would add the word, uh, or noise generating as part of, uh, those conditions for, uh, 1D and 1E.
Wonderful. We'll change the language as read into the record by staff. That's my motion.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion to the second. Please cast your votes.
Are we doing that by voice? By voice, I think it's not working.
Not working?
Four eyes, one absent.
Mr. Chairman, before you move forward, if I could read the right to appeal.
The appeal process, of course.
Uh, this project is final, so it is subject to appeal. Uh, for projects where the planning commission action is final, those actions are subject to appeal to the Board of Supervisors by any interested person and no development proposed by any application may be authorized until after the final date of appeal. An appeal must be filed with the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department, located at 2700 M Street, Suite 100 in Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $540 on forms available at the Planning and Natural Resources Department. The filing must be made within 14 days of and including the date of this hearing. If no appeal is received, the action of the planning commission is final.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. So I'm assuming nobody's gonna oppose if we adjourn the meeting at this point?
Well, can I say something?
Of course.
Um, so this is my last meeting on the planning commission.
No, we had already adjourned, sorry.
Uh, okay, well, we can leave. Um, I just wanted to thank my fellow Commissioners. It has been a pleasure to serve with all of you and, um, I'm appreciative of the work we've done together and our friendships, and I will miss spending every other Thursday night with you. Um, and I also...
Don't lie, I know you won't.
There will be times I miss it. Um, likely not over the next couple of months. Um, I also wanted to thank, um, staff. It's been, um, I've gotten to know all of you and you do some really incredible work on behalf of the county and the planning department. And, um, so thank you so much, um, for all the hard work you've done. And so, um, thank you all. It's been a really great experience that, um, and so I'm appreciative of the, um, confidence that Supervisor Maggard had in me. And I, um, I really enjoyed this time on the Commission and, um, I look forward to working with you all in different capacities moving forward. So, thanks.
Thank you, Melissa.
Mr. Chairman?
No, please, please.
I would like to, uh, one, thank Commissioner Poole for her term on the planning commission, but more so the wonderful input that she gave to us and the knowledge, uh, that she gave to us as we went along our way of looking at each and every project and doing it correctly. And thank you for your lawyer input that you have. I appreciate that, but I think you've done an excellent job as a planning commissioner and I just praise you for that. And good luck on your coming attraction.
I, too, uh, Melissa, really value our friendship. Um, really enjoyed working alongside of you here on the Commission. Um, I'll never forget it, and I know you're gonna make a great mom, so I'm looking forward to that as well.
Mr. Chair, I would like to say that, uh, before you leave and your last meeting, I was actually taken by surprise, not aware of that, but we will definitely miss you. You've been, um, wonderful to work alongside with, not only, um, here in these chambers, but also outside, just knowing you personally. You're a great individual, uh, always, uh, full of energy and, and spark. And I know that you'll carry that in anything you do in the future. And, uh, I wish you all the best with your new child and the amazing ability to, of motherhood and, uh, many, many great years for you to come. And, uh, thank you again for serving with us.
With that, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
No opposition, I'm almost guaranteeing, so.
Aye.
Thank you.